It's seven o'clock. We'll call the regular village board meeting to order. If I were to rise and say the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the board.
Maravka here.
Jones.
March.
Here.
Parker.
Yep.
Ham.
Here.
Bowden.
Okay, approval or corrections to the minutes of the October 22nd, 2018 regular village board meeting? Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, a motion to approve as presented. Move. Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee March, second by trustee Maravka.
March?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
Bowden?
Abs.
Ham?
Yes.
And Parker?
Yes.
Okay, accounts payable and payroll. Payroll pay period ending 10/20/18 in the amount of $49,089.42. Pay period ending 11/3/18 in the amount of $42,330.24. Accounts payable, general fund, $322,593.74. Motor fuel tax fund, $30,096.21. Water and sewer fund, $38,462.57. Giving a total of all funds, $391,067.27. Are there any questions on any of the bills?
That's gas boda.
That's something to do with the sewer.
Okay.
It's parts.
Okay. It's all ahead. Motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Ham, second by trustee Parker to pay the bills and the payroll.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
Public comment and/or questions on any non-agenda item? Reports of committees, police chiefs report. Engineers report.
Yeah, I can just give an update on the two big construction projects going on. Route 50 and Corning. The contracts have got to a point where they're gonna wrap up for the winter. They have the base course down on the east side of Corning and the east pavement widening on Route 50. Sewer's in. So they're not gonna put the final surface on until the spring. And they don't wanna open up the west side this late in the year. Just if the weather turns, then you're stuck. And, you know, they wanna have the road open for, you know, all lanes for the winter. So the next few weeks, they're gonna wrap some stuff up, you know, put some temporary striping down and open up both lanes on 50, open up Corning. And then they'll start up again in the spring to finish the widening on the west side and traffic signals, obviously, and everything else. For Ranchy Road, they're a little farther along. They plan on doing the sidewalk next week. And then some of the restoration the following week. And then depending on the weather, if they get a decent day, sunny and 40 degrees or higher, they're gonna try to pave that final service course. If not, it's not worth doing it when it's too cold. Because, you know, then it won't... May not, you know, last as well.
Right.
You know? So they wanna try to get that final service course down. But if not, they'll wait till the spring.
But they'll reopen the road?
The road will be reopened, yeah. And sometime December, it'll be reopened.
Okay.
And, yeah, you could drive on the base course. It's... They'll ramp up, you know, to where they need to temporarily. That's what those are at.
Any questions?
Is, like, overweight trucks or anything harming? Because there's not the top coat.
Not really.
At low capacity.
That top coat doesn't take much for the structural part of the road. Because there's so much under it. That's really just the final service to make it look nice.
Okay.
It's finer stone on top in the mix.
Okay. Very good. Uh, no old business, move on to new.
Yeah, did you just wanna report? Like, we have public works.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so just real quick. So, I don't know if you noticed, but some trees got planted, I believe it was last week. So we had 18 more in the fall. And Bob mentioned that some of the old maple trees in town are looking kinda sickly. And, you know, we're almost to the point, we've got all the ash trees down, but we might have to start thinking about taking down some of the maples that are looking bad. So, um, with, you know, we've always put in the budget for tree removal, so... And then we talked about the building, and I think that's on the agenda later, so we can talk about that.
Good. Uh, no old business, move on to new business. Item A, Iroquois Paving Corporation requests a payment... For payment estimate number one in the amount of $265,948.02 for work completed on the 2018 street resurfacing project.
Yep, Iroquois Paving finished the job. This is really just holding 5% retention till the spring, which the bill typically does, to make sure the restoration takes and there's no issues that pop up on the spring. So otherwise, the job's complete, though.
Very good. Any questions?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by trustee March, second by trustee Maravka to pay the amount due. Pay request number one, partial payment, holding back the 5% retention, paying $265,948.02 to Iroquois Paving.
March?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Item B, discuss and act on plan for renovations at new Public Works building. We were just talking about it a little bit, go ahead.
So we met with Bob. He had plans from the architect, Jeff Jarvis, drawn up just to do basic, you know, remodeling in the, uh, in the building out there on Ranchy Road. Basically, to get it up to code for, uh, to get, you know, signed off by Will County. But, um, you know, a little bit of, uh, little bit of plumbing. The bathroom, you know, isn't ADA compliant, so that stuff... Some fixtures need to be moved around. There is just the one bathroom, and at first, they said that we were gonna have to put in a second bathroom. But, you know, Bob said, you know, everybody who works there is male. And so they said, well, you know, you could submit a, uh, you know, I don't know, a variance or something.
A waiver.
A waiver or somewhere that they wouldn't require us to put in a second bathroom until we hired, you know, female employee. So there's that. And then, uh... So just like I said, just basically finishing off the office area. A little bit of drywall, a little bit of electrical. And then, uh, some concrete work on the outside for, like, the apron. And they wanted, um, you know, sidewalks to accommodate, uh, you know, handicap. And a handicap parking space that'd have to be paved. And then we also talked about insulating the shop area. And Bob mentioned that the ceiling is way higher than they need. So we talked about putting in some kind of drop ceiling and insulating it so we wouldn't have to heat everything going all the way up. So he was gonna talk to the architect, Jeff Jarvis, gonna draw up plans.
Yeah, and I thought, I thought Bob had told me that he had mentioned something to Jarvis about the drop, and he didn't like that idea.
Oh, okay.
I thought that's...
Maybe.
Was the report that came back.
Okay.
But we'll double check with him.
Yeah. So basically, I mean, what we're looking for is just, uh, you know, a general contractor that can handle, you know, pulling the right permits from Will County, you know, coordinating it with their building department, and making sure that everything gets done properly in a timely basis. So that's what the board kinda has to decide. We budgeted this year, I believe, $100,000 for that. We've only spent, I think, under $10,000, what they've done out there already. So, um, especially if we're not doing that drop ceiling, I don't see how we're gonna spend, you know, I don't think we'll be under that.
No, exactly.
So, um, yeah, so we just need to find a kinda...
And I was talking with, uh, with Mike and Gene about this today a little bit. And Gene has done a lot of, you know, this type of work with development and with construction.
Yeah.
And he offered, if we gave him a set of the plans, he could work up, you know, kind of a plan and a number for us.
And, yeah.
Kinda go forward. Using him, you know, maybe as a, what we call the...
General contractor.
Right.
Construction manager.
But that way, we'll...
I mean, it's not a very big project.
Right.
There's just a lot of little pieces that, you know, it'd be nice to have somebody keep track of it instead of letting it drag out. I think construction manager would be the best, uh... Yeah. Title to that.
So we'll, we'll go ahead and do that.
Yeah, so Bob's got the plan.
Yeah, I'll get them from Bob.
Yeah.
And we'll kinda work on that from, from that point, bring back to the next board meeting.
We're looking into gas, natural gas.
Yeah, we were... I think we've been in conversations with Nycor.
Yeah.
And we had an original number from them, which was...
Pretty outrageous.
Really high, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think, uh...
I think we'll stick with the propane.
For now, yeah. Until something happens where that number could possibly come down. Yeah, but they wanted, it was some astronomical amount to supply a gas line to the building.
Yeah.
All right. So we'll bring that back on the next agenda for further discussion and action. Oh, thanks. All right, uh, item C, discuss debt payment and additional police pension fund funding. So I, we, earlier, or last month, month before, we had the presentation from the police pension board, you know, asking for additional funding. And I know the board has talked, talked about it a little bit. I did have a conversation with the treasurer, you know, about this also. And it would be my recommendation, you know, if we would consider contributing $2 million additional to that police pension fund, you know, to get them... That would get them above the amount where they could do some more, um, aggressive...
Investing.
Investing, thank you, chief.
Yes.
And, uh, you know, help, help kinda bring that funds up. And then that would get us also in a better position, you know, as far as where we're at on the funding and, uh...
So what is the debt payment? What does that mean?
The debt payment is something else. That's something else I'm gonna talk about in a second. The debt is on the building, is the mortgage on the building that we have.
Yeah.
But basically, what I'm looking for, and we don't have to necessarily act on it tonight. You know, we're missing a couple trustees. But I think it's a, it's a good idea to make that contribution to the police pension fund just to get them to that, that next level.
With the funds coming from ourselves.
Correct, yes, yes.
You wanted that to be due separate, I didn't... The way you sent me the email, I thought it was a thing.
Yeah, no, that's okay, that's okay, yeah. Because we're not necessar... We don't necessarily have to take action tonight. I just wanted to bring this, you know, to the board's attention. Think about it, um, you know, we'll work on... I'll make sure that the two trustees that aren't here, you know, are aware of the discussion. And then we can kind of come back at the next meeting with that also. Okay? But I think that, that's the number that I would recommend.
So can we confirm with Mr. Rock that that additional amount is, um, to get to that threshold?
Yeah, it was one point, it was basically one point... It was 1.3, I think, was my understanding, would be to get to that.
Additional, right.
But this would be a little bit above that. I mean, his, I think, initial request was five.
Right. So that's supposedly what we're behind.
Correct.
And I guess, in addition to that, um, I guess, you know, we need to discuss when it's time for the next year's budget to make sure that we're funding it, um, you know, fully. I know the last couple of years, we were kinda behind.
Chief, the Jim?
Mr. March.
Yeah.
The actuary for the state has already submitted for next year's...
Okay.
The actuary amount based on the report that was filed. So it does have the funding amount.
Mm-hmm.
That's not taking into account any contributions by the bill this year. So that's all been presented for next year's budget.
Yeah, okay. But I mean, I'd like to see us fully fund that, um, at least, you know, what the actual amount is so it don't fall any further behind.
Right.
Well, if you meet the, um... The state has a, a funding, and if you meet the funding that they present, then over the term of the, uh, that the state has set in for the amount of time they reach the, what they say, 90%? Because they know nobody's ever gonna reach 100%. So they've set it to 90. They have those by years. So if you meet the obligation of the state report in the actuary with them, that dollar amount, you'll get there. This will make it sooner with this type of contribution. So don't think you have to try to make, find $5 million.
Right.
But that was just the, uh... So the reports are already on file for next year's budget and that you'll see before you know it, uh, on the pension fund.
Right. And then the other part of that, um, to think about, and again, we'll bring it back for the next meeting. Hopefully, we have a full board here. But the principal balance on the building of the Public Works building is currently $295,305.25. That's the principal balance. So that's just another debt, you know, I'd like to see us just get off of our books. There's, there's no reason to pay the interest on it.
And... Well, I think that was planned all along.
Yeah.
Because we bought that building, we knew we were gonna get money from the city and just pay it off, so...
That's just something else, someone to bring forward. And again, we'll put it on the next agenda, you know, for action when we have everybody here. All right, um, just... Item E, discussion of refining the ordinance to impose a fine for depositing snow, leaves, grass on streets. 97.02, placing injurious materials on street prohibited. Bob Hankey, Public Works Director, had talked with me about this. We have an issue, um, in the winter especially, where once we get the streets cleared, there's a number of people that then decide they wanna push all of their snow or blow all of their snow out into the street. And that causes, you know, a bit of a traffic hazard, you know, once the streets are clear. I think I understand, it's not necessarily the initial movement of the snow, you know, when they're still out plowing, but it's when everything is done, and then somebody comes home and then dumps a whole bunch of snow into the street. So we were talking about trying to figure out a way to have some kind of enforcement capability on that.
Well, uh, certainly, we can amend the or... Or we can draft an ordinance that would, you know, prohibit it. It is sometimes a difficult ordinance in the sense of its subjectivity and enforcement. In other words, you've got, um, you gotta ask about, oh, okay, um... Is Public Works going to, you know, refer it to the police? And the police officer has to go knock on somebody's door and give them a ticket for putting snow in the street? And you have to ask, okay, how are we gonna define that? How is it going to be determined that putting some snow in the street is either a hazard or harmful to the street? Which it probably really isn't, there's snow there anyway. And then the idea of, can you put snow in the street before the plow comes by? Or only after the plow has come by, and then you can't? And then you have to try to figure out, how are we gonna enforce that? Will you come up with a ticket? Police officer's gonna go, well, the plow hadn't come by yet. Well, it must have, because the snow's out there. You know, you have that. But it is an issue that you need to think about a little bit. We can certainly do it. And you do have the right to adopt an ordinance that says people can't shovel their snow into the street.
And grass and leaves.
Well, and grass and leaves, but, yeah, you know, there's also... Frankly, there's public relations with that, too.
Right.
You know, just on the practicality of it.
And we ask, I mean, it's, it's a common thing that we ask. And one of the things that I was gonna bring up tonight at the end of the meeting is the whole leaves right now. I mean, we have leaf collection, you know, in the village. We still have the problem of some people, they wanna push all of their leaves into the street, which in turn causes a problem with, you know, sewers, storm sewers, um, you know, instead of just putting them in the parkway where they're gonna be picked up. It's common sense, is what this all comes down to. As far as the snow, as far as the leaves, as far as the grass, you know, we have to appeal to people's common sense not to do this. I don't... And I said, the only reason I brought it up, you know, tonight was because Bob had approached me about it, and I wanted to bring it to the board, you know, for a discussion.
Well, you know, the simple answer is yes. We have the authority to adopt an ordinance that would prohibit it, restrict it, limit it. But, you know, the terms of the ordinance is, are what it is that you have to think about. In other words, uh, one shovel of snow in the street?
And here's another, and here's another...
You know what I'm saying, right?
You have to... And there's certain places in town where you have no choice...
Right.
But to put it in the street, like the downtown business district. And this has been a discussion, you know, that I had with the board back in 2014, before I was back on the board. There is no place else to put the snow, you know? And it only makes sense to try to get that snow into the street before the plows come by. But to do that, you gotta be...
Up early.
Up early, you know, and, and get it out, so...
Yes, I, I realize that.
Yeah.
And you can carve out, you know, if you want to, you can have, um, an exception for the downtown, or something for the downtown and something for, for other streets. But you need to figure out what it...
Right.
You know, what exactly it is. You, you do have the authority, though, to do that. So, like, with the leaves, does somebody, like, knock on a door and say, "Hey, next time, don't put your leaves in the street"?
We've, we've been trying to do that, yeah. And that's been through code enforcement at this point in time.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
Because I know, I know you hope everybody has the common sense not to do it. But maybe just giving them that warning, saying, "Hey, just giving you a heads up, don't throw your snow".
Right.
Like, if they do it once, okay, the next time, you've already told them. Now the next time...
And I think that's kind of where we're at is, you know, do we have the enforcement capability if it comes to the second time, you know, or the third time?
Well, what's the ordinance say now? It just says it's unlawful? Does it all... And is that it? Just that one sentence? We've got, we've got depositing trash litter and the like in the street, uh, which really doesn't pick up weeds directly. And then injurious material. Uh, the articles which may do injury to person, animal, or property. And of course, the leaves can do injury to the pipes and that, you know, the storm sewer. But you would wanna be more particular than this. I mean, frankly, as I said, if you went in to prosecute somebody for this, the first thing they'd argue is, "Well, that's vague and ambiguous, and we didn't know what, we couldn't do", uh, or whatever. So you'd wanna make it a lot more particular. And, and that would, you know, we can amend it and, and have it say pretty much what you want it to say. And, uh, we can also put in enforcement, uh, in a different way, too. For example, you can have a situation where you, you give an enforcement ticket, and they have to come into the, uh, village and discuss it and/or have a meeting about it. Or alternatively, the warning ticket turns into a real ticket with a fine. Who in the village would do that? I mean, we do do that in some places.
With all adjudication areas here, though.
No, but you can, we can put in the, the ordinance, a, a warning ticket with a requirement to come in. But somebody would then have to take on that duty once warning tickets were, were given. It could be anybody. I mean, in some places, it's the mayor, some places, it's the manager and, and whatever. The only reason I mention that is, as you mentioned, that what, what happens there is the person is put very clearly on notice, you know? Yeah, you have to come in and discuss this as the warning. If it happens again, you get a, a fine ticket, you know? Uh, you can do that, there are...
You send out letters and helping people with them?
You can do that.
Or stick them on the door?
You can actually do that, too. You can say that, and, and we set that kind of thing up in the ordinance, where the first time it's determined, you receive a letter. The letter will warn you that if it happens again, a ticket will be issued in the amount of X. And that's done, too, the, the letter.
Right, because we're not necessarily looking... We don't wanna write a ticket, but we want people to comply.
Right.
Yes, exactly.
Well, and that's the other thing, we have to decide comply with what. That's the other trick to it. You know, like you say, there are different places and different situations. You know, sometimes somebody just throws all their leaves out there, and they didn't have to do that. Other times, there may be places in town where, uh, you know, it's not conducive, particularly with the snow.
Right.
I know in our neighborhoods, it is, because some of the driveways are such that there's no place to put the snow from the driveway for somebody to get out of their driveway except into the street. So you get something like that, it's kinda hard to tell the people, "Well, you can't put the snow in the street because there's no other place to put it". I think here, most of the time, that would not be the case. You know, there's parkway, or there's areas where you can throw the snow. But, you know, all that has to be thought about a little bit, you know?
Let's, let's think about it. Let's think about it a little bit, and we'll bring that back for further discussion at the next meeting also.
Yeah, and tell us what you would like.
Right.
And then we can do a draft ordinance, and you can all look at it and, and decide. And the chief could look at it to see what he thinks about...
Possibly, we can...
Not possible.
We can work, we can work through that a little bit, you know, maybe with, with Public Works and with the chief prior to the next meeting and bring back a, a concept to the board.
Does the public get a... See, usually, when there's big snows like that, there's not a notice or there's no plan that the public already knows about as to what streets are...
Well, there's no parking on any village street after two inches of snowfall.
Oh, that's another thing, you know, you can limit the, uh, you know, limit it to the amount of snow.
Right.
You know, and that, that sort of thing. When you start saying things like, "You can't shovel snow into the street to the extent that it causes a traffic hazard", now you get to, well, how much snow causes a traffic hazard? You know, that much? Probably not. That much? Probably. No. That's, that's kinda the thing with it. It's, uh, but there's no reason you can't do it.
Okay. Well, and I do want to appeal, you know, to the residents to, especially right now with the, the leaves. You know, please place the leaves in the parkway. We are still in the, in the midst of the leaf pickup program. And then just, not into the street, but in the parkway. We have four candidates that we would like to... Go ahead, I'll let you...
Oh, uh, regarding the search for administrator. We had about 24 applicants. I reviewed the, um, the resumes, background information, and honed that down to nine. Presented that nine to the mayor. And from there, I made a recommendation on four candidates. Two in-state, two out-of-state. The suggestion was, we discussed today, um, a telephone interview with all four candidates to determine...
I, I would say two, two in-state, in-person.
Okay.
And then the two out-of-state by telephone.
All right, okay. All four agreed to, if, if that phone was...
Okay, but I would, I would rather meet face-to-face...
All right.
With the two in-state.
Okay.
If they're able.
Right, and that was to be scheduled the...
Well, we were looking, yeah, we were looking at Saturday, December the 24th, so it'd be the Saturday after Thanksgiving.
December 24th?
November 24th. I keep, I keep doing that.
Oh, I keep thinking they're gonna come on Christmas Eve, I don't know.
Don't be a smarto. November the 24th. And we would try to schedule it for, like, 9:10, 11:00, noon, be done by 1:00.
Right.
If we could do that. If we could do that. So if I could get the majority of the board to be able to be present?
I won't be there Saturday. I'm in Michigan.
Okay.
I don't know if that's a good weekend for it.
Okay. Well, take a look and let me know, let me know tomorrow if you can, okay? I'm just trying to get this moving, you know, forward. If we have to push it back a week, you know, we can.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll let you know.
All right, very good.
All right.
All four candidates are available.
Okay.
Two by phone, and then I'll mention to the in-staters?
Okay.
They actually have to sit down?
Yeah, that'd be good. Questions in the press? Anybody in the board have anything? If not, then I need a motion to go into closed session to discuss the acquisition of real property and collective bargaining. I move. Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee March, seconded by trustee Ham.
March?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
We will go into closed session, and there will be no action coming out of closed session.